Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Elmhurst District 205 School Board Meeting for July 15, 2014. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 this evening to talk about employment of employee contract negotiations and approval of June 17, 2014 closed-session minutes. We have four Board members present this evening, three absent. With that, first of all, please join me, stand, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Karen Stufen, our Board Secretary, is absent this evening, so in her absence, I am going to make Shannon Ebner not only Vice President but also have the dual role of Secretary this evening. We have more public comment tonight than we normally have, and I know many of you are here to talk about the issue of flooding. And then we have two people that are here to talk about academic boosters, is that correct? Okay. It is our policy to not comment on public comment, to me, which is, it's a frustrating way to come up here, speak your two minutes, and then get absolutely no response. So if you'll bear with me just a couple minutes, I just want to, first of all, ask, so Shannon Ebner is our representative to the City's Committee on Stormwater. And I'm going to ask Shannon just to give a quick summary of how many times they've met, over what period of time, just to give you an update of what we've done as a school board. We stand ready to cooperate, and that's always been our stance. And we believe we have been cooperating with the city. But, you know, to be clear, this is a city issue, it's not a school board issue. The city needs to be driving the issue, the city needs to be leading the process. And then I'll have some more to say after Mrs. Ebner speaks, but let me turn it over to Shannon.
I agree with Jim. We are not standing in the way of solving flooding problems. We are following the city's lead and cooperating with them. So we have met with the city three times in the past 14 months when Burke, the Burke Firm, presented their stormwater report in May of 2013. Since then, we met three times, and the last time we met with the city regarding stormwater was April 25. So during the meetings, we discussed using the Bryan, Jackson, and Madison land for stormwater storage, and all of the conversations were conceptual, and the drawings have not progressed from the concept stage originally presented from Burke in May of 2013. We decided to focus on the Madison property and determine solutions that meet the needs of our students and residents. Technical details were reviewed regarding the number of houses that would be saved from a significant flood event, along with the cost. So in regards to the Madison property, 12 houses would not flood for a cost of $2.5 million, and 51 homes would still flood, according to the city's figures. In addition, District 205 has a demography study underway, and future populations of students ages three through five have not been projected yet. Classrooms may need to be built at the Madison site, and this would reduce the area for stormwater storage. We don't know what our population growth is. It's grown tremendously just over the past couple of years, so we need to look more closely at that population growth. So the loss of use of our school property can negatively impact our students, it could increase class sizes if expansion's not feasible, and, you know, let alone the state mandates that are in place that don't allow you to raise class sizes for certain populations of students. So with that said, we feel the flooding is a community problem, educating our students is a community responsibility also. The frequency of meetings with the city should increase with more balance of student and resident needs. And yes, we are for solving the flooding issues, but the discussions need to move out of the concept phase, and an intergovernmental agreement should be started.
Thank you, Shannon. Let me also update you, and let me add a couple more things. You should know that last summer, the President of the Park Board and I met with Mayor Morley three times. And the park, what we verbally presented was that the Park Board was willing to swap ownership of Golden Meadows Park, which is a park that is located between the houses on the south end of East End, the East End Pool neighborhood, and north of the railroad tracks. It's problematic for the Park District, there's no parking there. They have a soccer field or two there, and the neighborhood is parked up along the streets with cars all day Saturday. And the Park District was willing to swap that 6.6-acre park for 3.2 acres that the city controls, or the city owns, on the west side of the Bertow, Elmhurst Hospital property And the idea there that would be that the city would use their influence with the developer of that site, and then swap that 3.2 acres for land on the north end of that site that is flat and conducive to building soccer fields. Perhaps the school district would buy a little bit of land in addition to that, and then we would have a future site at some point in which we, if we ever needed to build a school, for whatever purpose, we would have an option at little or no cost to the taxpayer to do so. And then we would swap, if we, say we tore down or rebuilt a school, we would swap with the Park District the two plots of land, and the Park District could move their soccer fields to the former school site. The city told us that that 3.2 acres was protected for the next nine years by covenants, protecting about 400 homeowners to act as a buffer zone between the hospital and the neighborhood. Clearly, once the hospital's no longer in business, the hospital, soon the building will cease to exist. And we feel that the hospital, the city would have a very small chance of, or no chance of, a lawsuit from a neighbor saying that they wanted that buffer zone to exist. But unfortunately, we were turned down by the city on that very basis, that they were afraid of a lawsuit from property owners that that plot of land serves to buffer from the no-longer-existent hospital. We asked for the addresses of those approximately 400 homeowners, and the parks and the schools would send those property owners a letter asking if anyone objected, and then being able to work through with anyone that did, and we were denied that request. So I just, so that went clearly nowhere. Otherwise, that Golden Meadows Park is earmarked to alleviate flooding on Pine Street, as well as Brynhaven and parts north of East End Pool. So I wanted to make you aware of that, that that discussion took place and was denied by the city. The other thing that, as you come up and speak, that maybe you can comment on, is we would, if, in any intergovernmental agreement that we would enter into with the city, we would have at least three requirements. The first of which is that we retain full ownership of that land, that if the students of District 205, that population grows, and we need to put an addition on a school, we need land in which to do so. And if that interferes with one of those stormwater retention sites, that we would have to, we would be able to ask the city to move that site to a different spot. We would also want to be made whole from any liability regarding stormwater retention on our property. And then, since we choose not to use education dollars on engineering consulting firms, we would therefore choose to use more of a liquidated damages policy. The city, when they came about 18 months ago and presented to us, they said there were approximately six instances that their records show that we would actually have a flooded field since 2006. So, you know, if we kind of, you know, just for discussion purposes, if we said, all right, that's once a year, they said that our fields would be usable and playable within two days. So as an example of a liquidated damages clause, that the city would owe us pick a number of dollars for every day, over three days a year, that our fields were not usable by the students of Elmhurst. So, you know, and then also, as far as the big picture goes, I want everyone to keep in mind that we have Lincoln School that is 100 years old, I believe it's this year Lincoln is 100 years old, and at some point needs to be rebuilt. You know, the city, from my understanding, their estimate is they could plan to spend up to $40 million on a floodwater mitigation project. The cost to rebuild Lincoln is about $20 million, and field school may be 15 or so years behind Lincoln, so let's keep that in mind as well, that that school at some point would need major renovations or to be completely rebuilt at some point. You know, with the idea here that, let's take a look, let's keep in mind the overall expenditures of our community as a whole and help prioritize them, and let's just make sure that we're doing all of these projects, the building of schools, floodwater mitigation, in the most cost-effective way possible. So I think that's about all I had to add. And again, I just want to restate that our feeling has always been that we stand ready and willing to cooperate with the city. We're working on their time schedule, we look to them for leadership on this project, we've met with them every time they've asked. They've asked us to assign two members from our Board to their committee with the two aldermen and two representatives from the Park District. We've done so, and we've met each time. So with that in mind, so our policy, as I said, on public comment is not to respond. So I'll call people up to the microphone and give people, you know, kind of the on-deck warning that you're next after the following speaker. So why don't we start with our, the two people that will keep topics together, with the two people that want to talk about academic boosters, Elizabeth Dirksheady and Holly Kost. Are you going one at a time or together?
One right after the other.
Okay. And again, I remind you to keep your comments to two minutes. There's a, three minutes, I'm sorry, three minutes, and there is a button on the microphone, the red light goes on when the microphone is on, and we got a little bell for you at the end of three minutes. Please state your name and your address as well. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Dirksheady. I live at 301 North Addison Avenue. I'm here this evening on behalf of the York Academic Boosters, which I co-chair with Holly Kost. The Academic Boosters Committee of the York PTSA was created in January 2011 with the support of both the PTSA and New York Administration. We started the 2011-12 school year with 15 members. Today, we have over 120 members. As many of you are new, we thought we'd spend a minute tonight introducing ourselves and reviewing some of our recent activities. Holly's distributed a copy of last year's guide, Making the Most of York, and I will then also pass out, while she speaks, our accomplishments of the last year. Highlights include, this year, we continue to support the two-tiered honor roll for the second full year at York. Breakfast treats were distributed to hundreds of students, recognizing their attainment, and York now posts the honor roll and sends notification emails to all parents acknowledging honor roll status. For the fourth year, we helped host Duke Decision Day, a spring recognition celebration, wherein every York senior is invited to declare and post post-secondary plans on an international map. The boosters plan the event, provide volunteer support, distribute pens to seniors marking the occasion, and create and display a thermometer of scholarship funds seniors have won in support of their further education. For the second year, we partnered with the Athletic Boosters to provide refreshments for the spring athletic academic awards reception, and for the second year, gold honor cords were distributed to York's academic top 5% graduates and worn at graduation. We also support academic enrichment. This past year, planning got underway for a September 2014 field trip to the Chicago International Manufacturing and Technology Show. Students will be exposed to state-of-the-art technology and workforce needs. This event is a continuation of the Academic Boosters partnership with the math, science, and industrial tech departments to boost STEM learning. At York, we also make good use of our website to increase awareness of academic club successes and individual student successes, and enriching activities, and to share extracurricular opportunities.
Thank you. I'm Holly Kost. I live at OS 655 Old York Road in Elmhurst. Oh, sorry. Okay. As Elizabeth said, I'm one of the co-chairs of Academic Boosters at York. The central goal, or one of the central goals of our group, is to ease the student and parent transition into York as far as their academics. Our signature transition tool is the book that I handed out to you earlier. It's, we give it out to veteran parents as well as eighth-grade parents called The Making the Most of York Parent Guide. We update the guide each year, the copy you have is from last year, we are working on our updates now, and we have those reviewed by the Administration at York before we publish them. We distribute them at the parent open house, as well as the two eighth-grade transition events, the one in the fall and the one in the winter. Last year, we distributed close to 500 copies of this book, and we received lots of positive feedback. At York's annual eighth-grade activity night in October, we host a table and a special activity called the York's Amazing Race, where we encourage students to look into the athletic and academic and social clubs at York, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback by that. We also host a table at the eighth-grade athletic, excuse me, academic night, and support the addition of the student honors panel at this event. This past year, we have seen exciting new efforts to increase communication with parents in York, and we had several new parent information sessions this year for freshman night, sophomore night, junior night, and senior night. These were parent forums that were hosted by the Administration, and Academic Boosters provided the planning and implementation support for this event. This was the first ever time that they have held these forums at York, and I think the feedback was very positive. We talked about academic, social, and life balance events for the different grades at the school. In addition, we proposed and worked with the York Administration to create the first ever AP Forum Night to talk about advanced placement courses, the tests, the availability, and the various issues that surround AP testing. And that went extremely well, we hope to have this again next year. And finally, in response to a lot of parent interest and questions, we created and hosted our own event, which was demystifying the college application process, a parent-to-parent conversations. And at this event, we shared tips about college search, college applications, and the scholarship process, and we had 10 parent experts at these tables, that parents came and learned from other parents how to approach this important process in their kids' lives. We look forward to another productive year, invite all of you to attend one of our meetings. We have monthly meetings at York, usually the first Thursday of every month, at 8:30 in the Yorker Room in the morning. We always have a parent, a York update, a Yorker District 205 guest speaker, and lots of lively discussion. Thank you. I talk too much.
Thank you. Let me call up Tracy Fleischer, and then followed by Mike Jasek. Did I, am I close on your last name? I apologize for mispronouncing.
Hi, my name is Tracy Fleischer. I live at 736 South Washington, and like many of my neighbors, I am here basically just to ask you, can you, to continue to work with the city on the flooding issue. Basically, all of the residents of Elmhurst, not only my neighbors, but I believe everybody in the city who has flooding issues would like to see some faster progress on this issue. While we appreciate that you have met with the city three times over the last 14 months, three times really is not all that much, and in 14 months, while you guys have met, our houses and streets continue to severely be threatened by the water. Many neighbors have still gotten water in their houses and basements in that time, streets continue to flood, and people continue to have sleepless nights, pick up their belongings, and pretty much live in fear every single night that there's a storm, that they're going to have serious damage to their homes and belongings because of these rains. And lastly, we, I speak for myself, but again, I believe a lot of other people, that it's unfortunate that the city has made this your problem, but they have put it on you, and while it is unfortunate, I believe many people would like to, think that you would like to be part of the solution, and help the residents of our town, and help those people who are looking for answers to our problem. Thank you.
Mike, then followed by, oop, oh, by Mark, Mike Burfield.
Good evening, thanks, Mike, with 748 South Washington. I, again, just here to talk about the flooding. It's still a concern on our street, it's a concern in our neighborhood. Jim, I appreciate the information you had tonight. We are definitely meeting with city council members as often as we possibly can, and this information will be processed and provided to them. I think it's important that they hear it from us, the residents as well. So I would just like to thank you guys for the time that you've done, and to keep working with the city. Thank you.
And then Mike, followed by Carlton Rink.
Oh, good, okay. Mike Burfield, 703 Washington. I thank you guys for listening to me tonight. Some of you might know me, I first started talking about flooding back in 2010, my first house started to flood, and as Tracy mentioned, we continue to flood since then. As recently as two weeks ago, my wife was carrying furniture, nine months pregnant, up the stairs. It's really not a way that we're going to continue to live, so we need to try to get an answer to this one way or another, right? Elmhurst is a great city. I grew up here, we moved back here. We just rated it as one of the top 10 places to raise a family, and to date, this hasn't really affected us as a community, families continue to move in. But eventually, it's continuing to get worse, and it's going to continue to affect us all, right? So we have a vested interest in trying to get this thing solved, okay? So again, I appreciate you guys considering this. Unfortunately, or fortunately, you have the opportunity to make a difference here. Okay, so I know there's some finger pointing going on, some things where things have been turned down, we've got studies by Park, the different districts and things like that. You know, what's clear to us, though, is we're not working together, okay? We need to work together to get this solved, okay? The other thing that I'd like to point out, make sure that we understand what's in the plan, right? Understand what's being proposed and what's going to be fixed, all right? Some of the numbers Shannon, you talked about tonight, are not congruent with what I'm aware of, okay? And the other thing to think about is, we don't need to remove all of the water from our street, right? As homeowners, we have implemented thousands of dollars worth of mitigation, flood mitigation. If we could just receive that water a little bit, put some of that in Madison on Washington, we would be safe, right? It's not 100% of that water needs to be removed, but at this point, without something else being done, we will continue to flood, right? So we need to work together. So again, thank you for your time. Jim, in terms of your comments, I'd be interested to hear what the subcommittee had to say about those recommendations and those requests. Have they turned those down outright? Are they being negotiated right now? Those sound perfectly legitimate requests to me. So again, let's try to get this thing done as soon as we can, given the weather pattern we've got going on, very likely, we're going to see water on our street and our basements before the end of the summer. So I hope things get done before then. Thanks.
And then Carlton, please.
Carlton Rink, 114 Pine. The previous speakers have pretty much said what I've wanted to say, but, so I just want to say, first of all, thank you for the information you gave us at the beginning, that helped me a lot, to fill me in on the bigger picture, what you have been doing, and thank you for what you have been doing. I just want to encourage you to do what you can in the future with the city, and it sounds like you're willing to do that, so I'm happy that, that seems like the mindset, so I just want to encourage you to continue to do that. So thank you for your consideration, and keep it up.
Thank you. I just have two more quick things to add. One thing that I was going to say in my introduction is, just from a personal standpoint, one of the reasons I, one of the many and complex reasons I ran for the school board to begin with, was that nothing makes me more furious when I write one property tax check, and then I hear the city, the schools, and the parks bickering over, well, we have different constituencies. This is one town, and it's a great town, I grew up here too, and will continue to make it a great town. And we realize that this is an issue. And like I say, this issue is the city's to drive, and for us to work with them, and we will continue to do that. And then, one more thing, under setting the record straight, I was a little confused by an Elmhurst Independent article on June 26 on page seven, where it says, "Impact Fees for the Bertow Development Defensible in Court: School District 205 Did Not Participate." I just want to set the record straight, and to say that could not be further from the truth. Our Finance Committee Chair met with the City's Finance Committee Chair multiple times. They shared cost data. It costs us, on average, $12,700 per year to educate a kid in Elmhurst. And we shared all that information, we shared information from other communities on impact fees, and showed the city that the true impact on the district could be somewhere in the area of almost $30,000 per kid. The city took their, what I'll call lag fee, as you all know, you pay your property taxes a year in arrears, family moves in, sends their kids to the community schools for that first year, pays their property taxes a year later. And on a $750,000 house, that brings in the school district about enough money for our operating budget to pay for one kid in our schools for a year. So we shared all that with the city. The city asked if we could negotiate with the builder directly. Now, Illinois law mandates that they pass an ordinance, and we were a little confused by that because we have no negotiating leverage with the developer. Developers asking the city for variances, the city can grant or deny those. Clearly, the city has the negotiating leverage that we would desire, that I would think anyone would desire, to go in and negotiate on behalf of the schoolchildren of Elmhurst. So we asked the city to negotiate on our behalf, because, first of all, that's their job. And the city, so we did take the developer's call, he offered us $8,500 per house. We asked the city, can he get more than that? Our cost is 12.7 per kid, and if you look at, in brick and mortar, what it would cost to put in addition, this is about how much per kid, when it comes to a point, we would have to build in addition, it costs to build in addition to any of our schools. to the, to any of our schools. And the city came back with an $8,400 number, which left us also a little confused. But I, I just want to set the record straight, that we did participate. We worked with the city, we shared all of our cost information with the city, and we asked the city to negotiate on our behalf. So in this article, it is not correctly characterized that we did not participate, nor did we refuse to negotiate. We just thought it was in the best interests of the community and the children of Elmhurst to send in the people to negotiate on our behalf that had the most leverage in the situation. So with that, I'll, I'll end, and we'll move on to the rest of our agenda items on our meeting. You're free to stay, you're free to go. You know, our agenda is not that long, if anybody wants a little sample of what the school board does all year long. So, let me move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Superintendent's Communication. Mr. Purnow.
Yes. First of all, we had two requests, four requests from the public, one regarding payments made to vendors, which was denied, also one, a specific question, which was also denied.
And then, we have the approval of Board meeting minutes from June 12th, 2014, and June 17th, 2014. Are there any changes to those minutes as proposed? John.
One quick change, I sent it to Ellen ahead of time. On page two of the June 12th meetings, I would ask to remove the words, "Make yard signs with advertising," and replace them with, "Offer the opportunity to post advertising signs at athletic events."
Fair enough.
So it more accurately describes the situation.
Any other changes? Then we'll let, with, with Mr. McDonough's proposed change, we will let those minutes stand as submitted. And then we have two board committees that have met since our last meeting, Curriculum and Instruction, and then Finance and Operations. So Shannon, for Curriculum and Instruction.
The committee met last month, and we had the opportunity to talk with many members of our staff. About 10 District 205 staff members came and talked about the ELL services at the elementary, middle, and high school, and they talked about long-term recommendations. So no, no decisions were made, well, we don't make decisions in the committee anyway, but they're, they're talking about, how do we reduce the achievement gap? And several of the long-term goals are a dual-language program, you know, increased development of, or fostering more of the native language to acquire more academic language skills, and a shared responsibility for outcomes of all English language learners. So big, big pieces, you know, that are, they're long-term goals, and it was, it was a really good meeting. And I, I wondered, Michelle, do you have anything that you want to add about, about that meeting? You're, you're welcome to weigh in, too, but I don't want to put you on the spot, but you're, you're welcome to weigh in.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. I always give Charles the, you know, he'd give him a chance, too. So, they talked about the vision and, and short and long-term goals, so it's going to be an ongoing topic of conversation, and I hope that we, at the next curriculum meeting in September, that we can continue this conversation.
Yes.
Okay. Another topic was the summer curriculum work, and everything that's going on in our summer school. I mean, we have hundreds of kids in summer school, and, and the September 3rd curriculum meeting, new and modified courses for York will be brought forward, and then to the next board meeting on September 9th. So look for that. The Data Warehouse was approved on our June 17th board meeting, so I don't need to say anything about that. And we briefly talked about our district goals. We're, we're going to talk about, or review that list of district goals this fall, and also our writing curriculum, that's, there's so many things going on, I mean, that's, the implementation is happening, full implementation will be the following year. Go ahead.
It's a field test this year with some of our teachers, who've been working very hard this summer on some professional learning, understanding the writing, how to, how to implement it in their classroom. And then we will have full implementation next year, and a lot of professional learning next summer, for all of our staff, who'll be rolling it out.
And then, I, I do have one addition to your minutes from that meeting. I, I was there, I didn't get listed as attending.
Oh, sorry.
I, I'm, really, I'm not slighted, I, just for the sake of accuracy. But it looks like it falls to me to discuss the Finance and Operations Committee meeting, since Mrs. Stufen and Mr. Bloom are absent from this meeting. I did attend that meeting, and we talked about several things. The first was an update on the bond market and options. We met with Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair. And interest rates are favorable to refinance some more debt within the district. So, we sent Elizabeth back to do some more calculating. We, as, as you know, we have some debt schedules from the 2006 referendum, that the debt, the, the amount of debt maturing each year that needs to be paid for increases, starting in 2015, and increases a million or 2 million a year, depending upon, depending upon the year. We asked her to come up with some other scenarios, where instead of keeping the payments level and extending it out, we asked her for a scenario where, using the lower interest rates, like, like refinancing your mortgage, but keeping the, the payment the same, that we could actually pay off the debt early, and use the new lower interest rates in the current market environment to, to save the taxpayers some money in two ways. One, by paying a lower interest rate, and two, by paying the debt off early. So she's going to come back to us at our next Finance Committee meeting with, with those options. Probably at the September 23rd full board meeting, we'll present those options, and also present a, a resolution that gives us some timing flexibility to time the bond market, and come to market when the conditions are most favorable for the district over the, the following few months. We did that last time around, it worked very, very well. We would recommend we do the same. And then, regarding bond issuance, we have traditionally used, as our, as our attorneys, we refer to them as Bond Counsel, Chapman and Cutler. We asked, we asked Elizabeth Hennessy from William Blair to check a couple of other law firms, in terms of their pricing for bond issues, ju, just to make sure that, that we are getting the most value out of our attorneys for the taxpayers' dollar. The second item on the agenda was the monthly financial report. We are, continue to come in under budget, and Chris Welton provided us some additional information about the June property tax distribution. The next item, which also appears on tonight's full board agenda, was the facilities rental agreement. We, we recommend to the board, using the Consumer Price Index, or which for last year was 1.7%, to increase our fees. As you recall, you may not, may or may not recall, the, the board went from a period of about 1980 to 2010 without changing those facility rental fees. So you can imagine how out of whack those fees became. You could rent a gym for an entire day for $5, and today, that, that doesn't even pay, literally doesn't pay the electrical cost to keep the lights on in that gym. So we ended up increasing them by a lot. Clearly, it became an issue with a lot of people, a lot of groups that rent our facilities, and I think this is a, just a smarter way to keep up with what actual costs are, while being as easy as possible on the, on the groups that do rent our facilities. And that was about it. John.
Maybe I can save a little time by just asking my question, rather than pulling the thing off the consent agenda.
Sure.
I looked at that, it looks great, it's, you know, it was a nice piece of work, it's an even better piece of work now, that I think is really responsive, and makes sure our resources are going to education, and that everything is cost neutral. The question I had was, for some reason, Group C includes Immaculate Conception's use of Hawthorne School's new gym. Well, I guess it's not so new anymore. And Group D, entitled Elmhurst Not-for-Profit Organizations, includes all Elmhurst Not-for-Profit Organizations, including Immaculate Conception, for the use of all other facilities in the district. And I'm just wondering, do we have any information why there is this special treatment regarding IC's use of the Hawthorne Gym? Is there some, some background that can be provided, why there's this differential treatment for that facility and that organization?
Yeah, that, first of all, I think that predates all of us. I, I might go to our local historian, Jan Doerner, for a little history of that. Jan, do you have some background on that, that you can share it? We won't put you on the spot now, but...
But, you know what I'd like, what I'd like to do is just leave it on the consent agenda, pass it. We need a, you know, facility rental agreement in place, so that, you know, the year can start. But I'd like to ask if, you know, staff, and I'll do my part, too, to try and dig into the historical source of that differential treatment, and if it makes sense, you know, we leave as is, and if there needs to be a change, I'd bring it up at a, at a later meeting for proposal, but I think we need to pass something tonight, so business can be done.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fair enough, yeah, we can bring it back up, depending upon what we, what we find out. So, okay. All right, so then, that leads us right into the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for Items A through D?
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda Items A through D.
Any, anybody want to remove any of those items? No? And then we need a second, sorry.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell is absent, Mrs. Stufen is absent, Mr. Bloom is absent, Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's four ayes and three absences, so that motion carries. And then, the next on our agenda is action items, the approval of a donation. We keep these separate, because we want to thank the people that donate their resources to the school district. And this goes to the Lincoln PTA, who is buying some very environmentally friendly hand dryers for the, for the, for Lincoln, I did say Lincoln PTA, right? For Lincoln Elementary School. So to the PTA at Lincoln, thank you very much. And so then, I, I need a motion. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation from the Lincoln School PTA and Enviro Nuts Club, in the amount of $1,007.49, to purchase hand dryers for the school's bathrooms. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy Number 880, gifts to the district.
Second. All right, move by, by Emily, seconded by John. Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen is absent, Mr. Bloom is absent, Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell is absent, Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's four ayes, three absent, no nays, that motion carries. And then, finally, that takes us to upcoming meetings, which are Tuesday, August 12th, is our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM, in the same rooms that we're in today. Tuesday, August 19th, is our Finance and Operations Committee, which starts at 6:30 in the same rooms, is up here. And then Wednesday, August 27th, we're having a committee of the whole Board Improvement Meeting, which will occur in the same rooms at 7:00 PM. There is no time on that, but I assume we're starting at 7:00. And then that brings us to Board Communications. Anything? Okay. Hearing none, then that brings us...
Just, as long as we have some time, I'd just like to reintroduce our new Assistant Superintendents, who are at the table this evening. Jim Wall, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Kathy Kostick, the new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, and Michelle Fitzgerald, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, with also the caveat that if they think our board meetings are this short all the time, think again. So just welcome aboard. And of course, Mr. Welton, who is the veteran Assistant Superintendent now, with seniority on the team.
I guess I'll add a couple of comments to that. First of all, welcome, we are thrilled to have you, our community's thrilled to have you, our students are thrilled to have you. It is also great to look over at this very good-looking group and not see the same haircut. I, I think I would have money to support that, that would be pretty funny. And then, one, one other comment is, Family Circle Magazine just recently published their 10 best communities in the United States to live in, and Elmhurst was on that list. And to be self-promoting of our school district, as, as my job is, the number one reason listed was the schools. And again, people move to communities for the schools. They stay here for a lot of other reasons, but primarily, people are moving here for schools. And, and, and I just wanted to say, thank you, Karen, for all the nice things you said about the school system and, and, and our community. So, thank you very much, and thanks for your support and coming and sitting through all of our meetings. So, if there's nothing else, that, we're at that point in our agenda where there's nothing else, so this meeting's adjourned.